Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. I have notice of publication, I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time, place, and hearing for the 2017 roofing projects. This notice was published in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Courier on January 11, 2017. The Board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk or offer comment regarding the roofing projects? All right, I'd like to close this, and we have a slide to show. So this is the budget summary for the 2017 roof projects. Doug, would you like to review the summary?
Basically, we talked about it at the last school board meeting where we're going to be replacing three sections of roof at Hanson Elementary School. And you can see that the design team has estimated the cost at $159,100 plus an additional $19,100 for contingency, with a total of $175,010.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item C on the agenda, the public hearing for the Cedar Heights Entrance Project. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of the public hearing for Cedar Heights Elementary Entrance Project. This notice was published in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Courier on January 11, 2017. The Board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to offer comment? Again, on the screen, you'll see the budget of Cedar Heights Entrance Project. If there are no questions or comments, we'll close this portion of the hearing, and then moving on to the consent agenda, item D on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
And it's been seconded by Dr. Shaw. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item E on the agenda is public comment, and at this time, we have no public comment. Moving on to item F on the agenda, Student Board Representative, Julie Jorgensen.
Thank you. Good to be back once again. Hope everyone's having a great start to their great week. So, not much to really report this week. I'm supposed to remind everyone that this Saturday, January 28, is our teaming up with you and I formal prom dress sale. If you know, or if you have any old formal prom dresses, anything like that, please contact the high school, me, Ms. Gardner, our student senate representative. And we like to hear preferably like before Thursday, so we can get everything ready for Saturday. The sale will be at 10, from 10 to 2 at the high school. Feel free to come if you would like to look for a dress for prom, or just any upcoming season. Second semester's going well, we are into, I believe, the full second week. Things are going well, students are really enjoying and getting into their schedules. We actually had a notable win this past weekend, the Cedar Falls Robotics Team. I believe it's Team 6420 won this championship that they were in, and they are now moving on to the, their qualifying finals for like state and nationals. So I would like to give a big shout out to them for their hard work and dedication. I know I couldn't ever do that, but give a big shout out to all of them. So, I guess that's all I have to report. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And you survived finals?
Yes.
Okay, we're glad to see you. Okay, moving on then to item G on the agenda, the Secretary's Financial Report.
Well, if you'll open up the file for the monthly financials for your December, we'll kind of go through those quick. I need to switch a file here real quick. There we go. Okay, if you want to, if we can start those, see if I can make this work, here we go. General Fund, for the month of December, as you can see, revenue was about 3.38 million with expenditures of about $4.2 million. And we had a small audit adjustment that came through with our auditors finishing up our audit for last year. So you can see our ending balance in the general fund was $8,726,000, and that compares to just a little over $10 million from a year ago. In the management fund, a really quiet month, you can see revenues and expenditures basically within $1,000 if each other, for an ending balance of $684,000 and change. One cent local option sales tax activity this month, the normal draw from the state of $409,000. There you can see expenditures for the month, $133,844 was for our ongoing three elementary projects. And then the $351,000, that's a combination of money transferred out to the debt service fund for our debt service payments, as well as some, still some outstanding fees associated with our refinancing that took place in November. So you can see our ending balance is at $6.789 million. Notice the, the reserved, unreserved, the only thing that we have reserved anymore is the $995,000 for the 2013 series revenue bonds. Physical plant and equipment, very quiet month, you can see the revenues and expenditures within ending balance of $3,475,000. Debt service levy, there you can see revenue that has come in for the month, interest, that's the $430, and then the transfer from Fund 33. And the expenses that went up, we did have to make a principal payment on our 2013 revenue bond, that's the top number, the $78,000 number, and then the $71,000 is the expenses associated with the refi. So you can see we just have a little, 1.2 million in the bank, and that compares slightly ahead of where we were one year ago. Activity Fund for December, pretty quiet, revenues and expenditures very, very similar, and you can see the ending fund balance, very similar to where we were one year ago. As well as food service, revenue and expenditure is very, very close for the month of December, and ending balance a little over $513,000 compared to $481,000 the previous year. There's the Student Coffee Shop Fund, very quiet for the month of December. Trust and Agency also very, very quiet for the month, $10,000 in, $11,000 out, so that's real quiet for December. And last, our River Hills Consortium, as schools are making first tuition, first quarter tuition payments, excuse me, you can see $180,000 trickled in, and then we had a big payment of $754,000 out. If you'll recall, last month, we had that $754,000 coming in revenue, and now this month it went out. And so that pretty much takes care of the expenses, the monthly financials, and I don't entertain any questions that the Board might have.
Any questions? Jeff?
So, general fund is about 1.3, 1.4 million behind where we're at this year. Any, I guess, what's kind of causing us, is it, I know that our revenue lags behind significantly the-
That's the single biggest reason, our revenue's legs behind because of increasing students and the, as our enrollment increases, of hiring additional staff to work with those students. While we may have the authority to spend those dollars, we don't have the actual cash. And that's part of the reason why our fund balance is slipping. And we've been really conservative on asking for that additional cash the last few years, and that couples into that, and you'll see that a little bit more here in a few minutes when we talk about last year's monthly financials and then on the next agenda item, we'll kind of see, you'll see a little bit of that as well.
Okay. I think last year at budgeting time, we said that we would have to increase our cash reserve levy going into this year, just like we did last year, to try to recoup some of that cash, because we do again have the authority, we just don't have the cash right now.
Any other questions?
If not, we'll put the Secretary's Financial Report on file for audit. Thank you, Doug, and I like your new format, by the way. Looks nice. Moving on to item H on the agenda, the District Health Report. Doug?
Okay, Janelle, if you want to pull up the big PowerPoint, there we go. This is, we do this every year at this time, right, usually the meeting or two after our audit, we sort of go through the district's finances for the previous school year. This report is a little bit different than what you saw at the meeting last month when the Board approved the audit. The audit talks more about, it's all of cash, basically, and it lumps our funds together. If you'll, if you actually, you know, if you take the time to read the audit, you'll notice that it talks about all governmental funds, and then all proprietary funds. It doesn't necessarily break it down into individual funds, or it may somewhat break it down, but it only talks about, like with capital projects, it'll combine both funds, 33 and 36. So what we're going to do here tonight is we're going to kind of walk through this in a little bit more detail, and sort of give a little bit of a background of where we're at, and why we have to do what we have to do. So we'll start off, for those that aren't familiar with school finance, and the basic thing that we always have to remember in the state of Iowa is that there are two different ways public entities are required to operate. One is a home rule, which is typically would be a case with counties and city government, but public school districts in Iowa operate under what's called Dillon's Rule. And the big difference is in Dillon's Rule, we can only have the authority to take action based specifically stated by law. So basically, the Code of Iowa tells us what we can do, and with home rule, it's just exactly the opposite, where they can pretty much do, they have a little bit more liberty subject to any law that says you can't do something. That's kind of the primary difference between the two. And in Cedar Falls, those are, you can see the different funds that we work with, those are not necessarily all of them, but the, but the major ones. And each fund has got its own specific purpose and restrictions, and we'll kind of walk through that here as we go through the presentation. The goals and principles of the Iowa School Foundation Formula, which is the driver of the general fund, and you can see those different bullet points there, but probably the biggest one that you want to focus in on is in red, where it establishes maximum spending control. The budget sets the absolute ceiling for the amount of dollars, or amount of authority that a school district would have in any one year to spend dollars out of the general fund. And as associated with that, there are four key factors in the Iowa School Foundation Formula, and we all know that the number one factor is enrollment. We count our students on October 1 of every year, and that basically drives what the budget's going to be in the general fund for the following school year. So the, as an example, the enrollment we took on October 1 of 2016 is the basis for the budget for the 2017-18 school year. The legislature has established the law that establishes cost per pupil, and that cost per pupil number is nearly equal across the state. There's been a little discussion about that at the Des Moines level lately, about making that 100% equal. But they're generally speaking, it's nearly equal, and so the same dollars that Cedar Falls gets is very, very close to the same dollars all our neighbors and any other school, public school district in the state of Iowa would receive, per student. The third piece is supplemental state aid, and the legislature and the Governor control that. And basically, how your budget is built is taking your state foundation formula, cost per pupil, times the percentage growth that the legislature and the Governor will agree on, and then take that type of your enrollment, and that sort of sets the framework for your general fund budget. The state foundation formula does set your expenditure ceiling, again, for each school district, and their total authority. And it basically tells the school district how you're going to develop the dollars to cover, to cover the expense for that authority. And, and spending authority is a little bit of a complicated process in Iowa, a lot of people can get confused by it. But basically, the best way to describe it is to think of a spending authority for a public school district as a, as a credit limit on your personal credit card. You may have a personal credit card with an example of, say, a $10,000 credit limit, but you may or may not have $10,000 in your credit, your check, checking account to cover that credit limit. And spending authority is just a calculation, it doesn't generate its own cash, and then at the end of the school year, if you don't use all of your spending authority, it rolls over to the following school year, following fiscal year. In summary, it's a pretty quick summary here, is how we calculate spending authority is our combined district cost number, and we talked about how that was developed, your cost per pupil times the number of students. A request that the Board will make to the School Budget Review Committee, and in Cedar Falls, we have requested for all three items. We have our four-year-old preschool funding, our instructional support levy, which the community has graciously supporting us with. And then miscellaneous income, and miscellaneous income, the biggest percentage of that is tuition dollars that we receive for open enrollment in, for special education students that are educated in our school district. When you, when parents pay their book bills, that's an example of miscellaneous income. All our federal dollars that we receive for Title I, Title III, Title VI, all of those, that's all considered miscellaneous income as well. And then you add your previous year's unspent authority, and that comes up with your maximum budget for the year, subtract your expenditures, and then you know what you're, where you're going to be at, at the end of the school year. I know this, this slide is probably a little hard to see on the screen, but this is the summary calculation sheet, and you can see the last four fiscal years of dollars received and dollars expended, and the lines highlighted in yellow sort of give you an idea of what we had for total revenue, total expenditures, and our carryover, or unused spending authority at the end of those four school years. And the last piece of this, of the Iowa Public Foundation Formula, is its balance. And the balance is set up in such a way that it tries to level the playing field a little bit, as far as what individual property tax owners will have to pay. And property tax-rich districts will typically receive less state aid than a property tax-poor district, simply because it's a way to sort of level the playing field a little bit. And how it works real simply is, is every school district in the state of Iowa pays the first $5.40 per thousand towards that cost per pupil, and then the state of Iowa then will backfill up to the foundation aid percentage, which is 87.5%, plus, in the last few years, the state of Iowa has covered the increase in supplemental state aid at 100%. And then what, the remaining amount is what's called the additional levy, and that then is added on to the property tax, a $5.40 amount, and that amount, that additional levy can vary from district to district, depending upon, again, whether they have a high assessed valuation per pupil, which would be considered a property tax-rich district versus a low assessed valuation per pupil, which would be, which would be the opposite case. But in a nutshell, that sort of defines it. All the other funds that we talk about, and we just went through them through our monthly report, they cannot be used to support the general fund, you can see them there on the screen, they all are restricted or specific purpose funds, as described by the Department of Education and the Code of Iowa. And so what we're going to do in this report is to try and walk through a little bit, and try and give the Board and the community an idea of where we're at. You'll see some fund balances, you've seen those fund balances before when we did the CAR report back in October, so that should be nothing new to the Board, but it's kind of a reminder of where we ended the year last year. And also some financial indicators. So these are the financial indicators that the Iowa Association of School Boards has developed. And you can see there's basically six of them with, or five of them with one that has a subpart to it. And we do the little background color on each slide to give you an idea whether it's a, whether we're moving in the right direction or not. Our first one is enrollment, and we all pretty much know that enrollment in our school district's been growing. You can see that steady growth over the last eight years, I believe, and the district's been moving in the right direction, it's very positive for us. 15% increase over the last eight years. And this graph, just to clarify, does not show any preschool students or four-year-olds, because of the, that's considered categorical funding, I don't show that in this report. There you can see our enrollment projections, and I think this is not necessarily anything new to anybody. RSP and Associates has been doing enrollment projections for a number of years now, their projections are in the red line, and you'll see the darker colored line is the actual student enrollment count, and especially the last five years, RSP has been really, really close in their projections as to what our enrollment is, and you can see what their projections are moving forward for the next 10 years. And this is, had, was updated as of their latest projections, I think that we presented to the Board earlier this month. CAR are our general fund balance off of the Certified Annual Report, you can see there are, cash is slipping a little bit. Total assets is based, just as a reminder, is cash and any receivables that would be coming, that would be, as an example, open enrollment tuition that is due the school district, but we haven't received it yet, that would be, that's included in that. And then the fund balance is the difference between that number and what we have to pay out, that would be like all the, typically, at the end of the year, we owe teaching staff their July and August salary, that's subtracted off of that, any payables that we would have that we haven't made by June 30th. So you can see we went, we had 11.94 in total assets on hand, but when you subtracted out all our payables, it, we were actually, we're on net of 5.48. And you can see that that, that fund balance has been slipping the last couple of years, but again, we've been looking at that from a perspective of trying to manage our cash in such a way to have the appropriate amount, but not to have too much on hand, and, and just trying to balance that all out. It's, it can get a little tricky with, with our enrollment increases jumping at the rate they're jumping, it makes a little bit of a challenge sometimes. There's our revenue and expenditure summaries. Now again, this is a cash basis, not a, a authority basis, and you'll see the difference in that a little bit later. Expenditures actually decreased by 863,000, or excuse me, revenue decreased by 863,000, and our expenditures were down just about 173,000 from the previous year. But you can still see that our expenditures are outliving our cash. Again, that's cash part of that, and the biggest part of that is because we've not been levying cash reserve levels to keep up with that, and when, as an example, the 100 and some students that we had that were new to our class, school district in October of 2015, we're not actually receiving that cash till this year. So you're, there's always that lag.
Whereas one year in arrears, with the dollars flowing into the district for expenditures that might have been paid out that fiscal year to offset the enrollment.
And with the special ed deficit, we're two years in, in arrears.
Yeah, so that's the part that's a little confusing on that, with increasing enrollment, and I would, we do have the, the year lag. How from the 1314 to 1415, 1516, our revenues have continued to decline in a, in-
Well, part of that is because of the River Hills Consortium, we were flowing that through the general fund at one time, and now that has completely cleaned out. If you look at, especially 1314 and 1415, we were flowing River Hills through there, and in 1314, that was over $3 million, and that was all in and out.
That was in River Hills in 1314, and River Hills wasn't in 1415.
It was, half of it was in 1415, and this year, in 1516, it was, it was completely out of it. You have to remember that piece of the puzzle, too, is that, that's an in and an out, so that $3 million came in, but that $3 million went right back out in fiscal 14, and in fiscal 15, it was about one and a half million. And so that sort of skews the bar a little bit.
So is that affecting, well, it shouldn't affect our, but our expenditures have also, if you look back at that graph-
The net would have been the same, if you look at the difference, like in 1415, we had, the difference between 12.12 and 53.04, that difference, we still had that difference, it's just it inflated the total revenue and total expenditures. So that's it, but we still, we still ran over about a million in 1415, again, from a cash perspective. Again, this is all cash, not authority.
Right.
And it's because the cash legs behind.
But we actually spent less money this 1516 than we did in 1415 on a cash basis.
Correct.
Just overall.
I think last year, again, when we talked budget, last April, we talked about that this year, we would need to look at that cash reserve levy to make up some of those cash losses. So it's, it's really offsetting the expenditures that we have, knowing that we, we have the authority to be able to generate that cash.
And when we get to budget in March, we'll talk a lot about cash reserve levy, and I'll remind the Board what we basically agreed to a year ago about how we were going to build our cash back up, and I, and we'll talk about that when we do budget next month.
Yeah, I know Doug said this, but in school finance, authority is so much more important than cash. So that is really the strength of the backbone of a, of a strong, financially stable district is the authority. So that's what we always use as one of our metrics, and I know Doug will talk about that here in a bit as well.
One of the things I do every year is I kind of show the Board what, where we're at with the instructional support levy. Now, the instructional support levy is expensed or accounted for inside the general fund, but we always sort of break that out to keep a track of that, because the community has supported us with that, and we feel that they want to be able to be transparent about where the dollars are going. And so you can see that for last year, we took in about 2.5 million in cash, and we spent about 2.3. Those dollars then do roll over in the ISL, so those dollars are available to the individual schools in the district for future year. So it's not like they disappear, if there's a, at the end, it carries over. Trying to show here, it might be a little hard to see, but this is where, where our dollars come from. The orange in the bottom is property tax. Again, the, above that, the 3.58 million is local other, and again, that's the tuition in, the special education tuition in, open enrollment in, when you pay your textbook fees, those sorts of things, when somebody rents the facility, that sort of thing. There you can see the state of Iowa has contributed 28 million, and then the federal government, the 2.15 million at the top. On, this tries to show it by percentage, so you can see roughly a third of the general fund's total revenue came from local property taxes, 55% from the state of Iowa, and then the rest either through federal government or local other resources. Second, financial, dashboard indicators are financial solvency ratio, and this is basically determined by taking your assigned and unassigned fund balances divided by your general fund revenue. This has been a longstanding indicator that IASB has developed. We have slipped a little bit again, but again, our cash balances have dropped, and so your cash balance is directly going to affect what this ratio looks like. We're down at, we're at 9.78, which is still about where we want to be, the district's goal for this is 10%, so we're really about where we want to be. IASB recommends a minimum of 5%. As we move forward in the next few years, as we, assuming we continue the trend of trying to rebuild our cash balances back up, this solvency ratio will start to creep back up. History of unspent budget authority in dollars, what this indicates is we expended 8.61 in total spend, we had 8.61 in total spending authority for last year, which is down $20,000 from the previous year. So if you go back to that other slide, we had way over a million dollar difference in cash between expenditures and revenue, well, our authority only changed by $20,000. So that's, this is the classic example of why, of the lag, as we talked about. And the red bar indicates our unassigned unrestricted unspent authority. Now what that means is, a lot of dollars that we receive from the state of Iowa, and from the federal government, are categorical dollars that are restricted, they can only be used for certain items. TSS money can only be used for teacher salary supplements, Title I money can only be used for the Title I program, the four-year-old pre-K program that we have, those dollars can only be used for those, for that program. The list goes on and on and on. And so you can see in this example, we actually shrunk the gap a little bit, and our unrestricted, unassigned fund balance actually creeped up a little bit from the previous year. This is something that the state of, that the Iowa Association of School Boards and the Iowa Department of Ed are really starting to look at, is this unassigned unrestricted unspent authority. The classic example that was given to us at a conference I went to last fall, or last spring, I don't recall which, is there was one school district that, in our case, it would be the blue bar, they looked really healthy, but when they took out all the unassigned unrestricted amounts, they actually had a negative unspent authority. And so that's something that they're starting to focus more and more on. We've tracked that, as you can see, for a long time, that's just one of the things we do. And, you know, we did, if we can hit our, with a $55 million budget and be within $20,000- And, you know, we did, if we can hit our, with a $55 million budget and be within $20,000, I think we did a really good job last year of trying to make things fit. Here's another, we also do it by percentage to track our authority, and you can see, we're right at unchanged, basically, from the previous year. Our goal is 10% unassigned unrestricted, we're at 12.89, so we're running better than where we would like, you know, within where our goal is, and which is a positive thing for us. Another thing that we track, and IASB asked us to track, is the difference between whether you went up and down in your authority. Well, we went down 4 hundredths of 1%. That's what that 20,000 calculated out to be. Net fund balance as a percentage of unspent authority, I like to track this, and this basically gives us, shows you what the district's ability to pay its unspent authority, but we're basically at about 56%. So we need to try and work on building that back up a little bit. Days net cash ratio, this is your former SBO, Dr. Hansel developed this ratio. It's a, it's a great ratio that basically tells us, how much cash do you, how far can you get into the new school year without, with the cash you have on hand? Typically, Iowa school districts, except for late tuition payments that'll come in the month of July, we receive no state aid, we receive no property tax dollars until September. So we basically have about a three-month bridge that we have to build in reserves. We're at 76 days at the end of June of last year. You can see, just a couple of years ago, we were at 86 days, so that's numbers slipping down. In a perfect world, you'd have 90 days on hand. I've always said that if I could be in that 85, I'd be, we'd be very happy. We're okay, we're not having to borrow any money to make cash flow, but I don't, but we want to make sure that we don't slip down, because when in 2010, when we were at that 67 or 68 day ratio, we were starting to get pretty close to that point. Net fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, we're right at 10%. This basically means that cash available to cover our non-fundaments, that's our goal is 10%, so we're right there. So that's where we, that's where we want to be. The other, or probably the other biggest ratio you want to look at is salary and benefit costs. With salary and benefit costs in the district, they're typically around that 80 to 85% range. We're at 82.6. Part of that increase is due to the fact that we needed to hire more staff because of our increased enrollment, and so that, that's kind of where we're at and the cost associated with that. It'll be interesting to see where that lands at the end of this year with the TLC grant that we now have. We had some very, very well experienced staff members that are now part of the TLC categorical money, and we'll have to look at that and see how that changes things. We're not atypical being in that 82, 83% range. I like it a little bit better when we're closer to 80, but we're not atypical for where we're at. Assess valuation, obviously, when we ask the community for property tax dollars to help support that, the property tax rate that they pay is directly tied to the assessed valuation that we have in the community. You can see since 2008 how that has grown. We had a 3.6% roughly increase from fiscal 16 to fiscal 17, and with the TIF, it was up roughly 3.8. But look at the increases in the community over the last 10 years, where we've been running 56, 58% over the last 10 years. I think that's a little bit of a testament to the leadership of the city council and the community, and how they've been able to have the assessed valuations grow in such a positive faction in this community. The dip, or the jump that you see on the TIF valuation in 2014 was a one-year, one TIF sort of ended and another one started, and so that's why that, that's why you saw that, you see that bump in 14. There are going to be less TIF valuation dollars in fiscal 2018 budget, because there's some TIF dollars that are rolling out into the regular assessed valuation pool starting in July. That really doesn't affect us a whole lot. We, the general fund does not use TIF dollar, does, cannot use TIF assessed valuations, but the PEPAL fund and the debt service levy may, can. So from that perspective, it depends upon which fund you're looking at as to whether that's going to help or hurt us as far as what the tax has, property tax rate would be. So, but overall, it's been, a lot of my colleagues are pretty envious of when we can consistently talk about the type of assessed valuation increases our community has been experiencing over the last 10 years, and so if you see a city councilman or a former city councilman, thank him.
So as, this is, this is a huge plus for us as far as the increased valuation, just a, and I think you were alluding to this, as far as where, for example, in PEPAL, that really helps us a lot, because it's a, it's a flat rate, so if the, if the, what we're multiplying it against continues to increase, we get more, more PEPAL dollars.
Correct.
And with our, the bonds that we recently issued for, or we're about ready to issue, sorry, for the, for the elementary schools that were approved by the community, is that our, do we, I think I know the question, they answered the question, but I'll ask, so do we change the amount that we're going to assess against, you know, per thousand that we're going, because we've got more, more property that we can throw it against, or do we remain it fixed and we're actually going to benefit by?
There are, there are two factors that'll drive that. The first factor is going to be what the assessed valuation is, and of course, that's increased since we did our calculations last fall. The other thing will be is what's the interest rate going to be on the bonds when we, when we purchase them? We'll know February 7th. And at that time, the folks at Spear will help us. We've got the debt schedule already developed. We've already said we're going to pay X amount of dollars in premium, or, excuse me, principal every year, and so you'll just multiply the interest rate to that, and we'll come up with that total, and then we'll know. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to be slightly less than the amount that we communicated to the public when they approved that levy, but I won't be able to guarantee any of that until after the board approves that final, those bids on the 7th.
So assuming that the interest rate is fixed, which is a big assumption, I agree. Because of the fact that our assessed values have gone up, if the interest rate is the same, we should, that means per each property owner, the load will be less.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
So, good.
And he won't know that till the 7th.
Won't know that till the 7th, but, you know, interest rates, well, yeah, I don't want to speculate.
And I don't, and I don't want to speculate either. We had a meeting late last week as we're preparing to do our bond ratings this week, and, you know, we'll find out.
Based on our assumptions that we made two years ago, the hope is, though, that they will be less than what we projected.
Yeah, well, that's a pretty significant increase in assessed value, so.
And the assessed valuation, like you said, it certainly doesn't hurt a thing.
Yep, yep.
Okay, back to the general fund here for a minute. When we, when we talked earlier about how the dollars are developed for the cost per pupil, and it's a mix of state aid and property tax, and you can see, especially over the last three years, the percentage of state aid versus property tax mix has been, a little bit more state aid every year and a little bit less property tax as a percentage. So, and again, in 2013, 14, that was the bump where all the TIF money flowed into the, what I call the regular assessment. So we were, we had more assessed valuation per pupil, that meant we had to pay more property tax for it. The following year, we had less because it fell back, and that's why the amount of state aid then popped back up. So that's a really graphic example of how that works, right there on that slide. One of the things I like to try and do is I like to try and show and compare Cedar Falls to, to other school districts across the state. And what I've got here is I've got six different dashboard indicators. Two of them are for fiscal 15, I apologize for that, but the fiscal 16 data is not out yet, but the other four are as accurate as they possibly can be. You can see we're the 17th largest school district in the state. We had a solvency ratio, a year ago, we were at 12.59, this year we're at 9.78, but, or for fiscal 16, we're at 9.78, excuse me. And you can see where we were probably, roughly about 2/3 of the way from the best to the worst. There were a handful of districts that had negative solvency ratio, you can see that. Unspent budget authority per pupil, again, we rank about 217th out of the 338 school districts in the state. Assess valuation, we're about right down the middle. Of the, all the school districts were 171st, we're about right in the middle with that. General fund tax rate, again, when you're comparing all 338 school districts, we're about right in the middle. And our total tax rate, we're about in the upper third, or right on that borderline between the upper third and the middle third, and 127th, where our rate was 12.44 for fiscal 16, and the state average is 13.9.
Just to be clear, I think you, you said upper, between upper third and middle third.
I meant upper third is as far as the lower.
Lower third.
Okay, correct.
Correct.
You're correct.
Important distinction.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking lower is better and that's upper, but I apologize.
Property tax is lower is better.
But, sorry, but when you look at that, on that bottom right dashboard, again, our average is, is $12.44 for fiscal year 16, and the state average is $13.90. So that's a full dollar and 46 cents below the state average, so something I think is very good to note.
And then the other thing I do is I like to compare against the 25 largest school districts. This, this school district's had a history of doing that for a long, long time. We're in the top 25, like I said, we're the 17th largest district in the state, and you can see where we rank enrollment-wise. Our solvency ratio's a little bit better than average.
Is that the next slide?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, can you, there we go, thank you. Okay, I apologize. Again, our solvency ratio's a little bit better than average, our unspent balance per pupil's better than average. When you get into assessed valuation per pupil, we're fifth out of seven, out of the top 25. When you, when you look at our general fund tax rate, we're the second lowest general fund tax rate out of the top 25 schools, and when you look at our total tax rate, we are the lowest tax rate of the top 25 schools. So, you know, depending upon what group you want to compare yourself against, and I think top 25 school districts is a more, more accurate or appropriate picture to compare us with against school districts that have an enrollment of maybe 200 versus all the way to Des Moines, as the, as the opposite end of the extreme. So that kind of gives you a dashboard picture of where we look, or snapshot of where we're at in comparison. The other piece of, of it, of course, is the supplemental state aid, and what, and as you can see, the only thing that's consistent is our inconsistency, when you look at this graph. Simply put, the red line is the state amount that they've granted each year in supplemental state aid. The, I guess I'll call it, the gray line, the top line, would be Cedar Falls' actual increase. The dashed line on the left, that's yellow, that was the year that the Price Lab students rolled into the district. We actually, without the Price Lab students, we actually would have only received 1%. We still only received 1% because the difference always sent to the university. Okay? And then in 2013, 14, that was the year that we received the plus-two money, and so that's where you see that dotted blue line in there. Where we're going to be for next year, your guess is as good as mine.
And just as a reminder, the governor's recommendation was 2% in his statewide address, so we'll have to see where that works its way out through the legislative process.
Right. And then we'll kind of go through the other funds real quickly here. I know I've taken up a lot of everybody's time, but again, these are restricted funds, and we can only use those funds per the laws and regulations as established by the Code of Iowa and IAC. And the management fund, there you can see what we use those for. The big thing we use those for is the property liability, auto, work comp, insurance premiums. We do use them for property loss, and, but you can only use the deductible out of that. So as an example, we have a $5,000 deductible, so if we were to have some major event happen, I can only charge a management fund for the $5,000. And then, of course, unemployment. And we do not have a early retirement or early severance program in the district, so it's available, we just don't have that. So you can see our fund balance is very, very close between the two. This is a plan drawdown, we talked about this back in October, where, how much more longer we're going to be able to slide that down, I'm not quite sure yet, but expenses and revenues run very close to each other. On our one-cent sales tax fund, that program's only changed its name two or three times since its inception. As you know, in Cedar Falls, we're using those dollars for all the improvements that we've done to our school buildings since the year 2000. There you can see that, the graph, the one thing that I would point out, the dotted line at the bottom is actually the net unrestricted fund balance because of the dollars we have to set aside for the 2011 and 2013 series revenue bonds. Now, that will change quite a bit at the end of next year, because when we defees the 2011 bonds, we did, we don't have to hold the reserve for those anymore. So when we talk about this next year, that, that'll change quite significantly. PEPAL fund, it's two parts. The board controls the first 33 cents in the community, then has graciously given us a $1.34 additional for, for the things that the community, that the district needs to operate, and we're very grateful for that. You can see a, sort of a summarized list of all of the items, technology being one of the bigger items that we use for equipment out of the PEPAL fund. Here are the fund balances, you can see for the last two years, the fund balance has been real steady in the PEPAL fund, and our, our total assets, excuse me, have been real steady, but our fund balance is creeping up as we kind of throttled back for fiscal 16 on, on projects.
Just as a reminder to everyone, the bond projects, or the, excuse me, the building projects that we have coming up, that was an estimated cost of $40 million with the general obligation bond of $32 million. So there's that $8 million difference that are paid for through our internal fundings.
And that'd be all through the statewide one-cent sales tax, correct. Debt service levy, this, we're going to start reporting on this now, because with the general obligation bond proceeds coming, how that basically works is that when the proceeds arrive in late March, they'll be deposited into the capital projects fund, you'll get to see yet another fund now on your monthly report. We'll have a Fund 31, and that'll be capital projects fund. And then, but the, but the taxes that we will assess for the payment of the debt will be deposited directly into the debt service fund, and then that payment for that comes out of the debt service fund. So it's a little confusing, but that's how it works, and so you'll start to see, see more of that as we go through the process. You can see it's all zeros, because really, it's, we're really a debt service just to flow through for, as of right now. Activity fund, obviously, that's used for student-related activities, you can see the list on the screen. Our fund balance, nice increase in fund balance and total assets compared to the previous year with that. Nutrition fund, it's, it's basically considered a business activity, and we only do transactions that are authorized under Iowa Code 283A. Basically, it's for food service program. And you can see the balance is there. The one thing I will note, we talked about this when we went over the report back in October, we now have to report our pension expense within that fund. So you can even see that even with the pension expense, we had a positive fund balance of 200, or 350,000. And then, and to summarize everything, that we, the district lost about $1.1 million in cash from a year ago. Our net day cash ratio dropped eight days from 84 to 76 days, but our unspent budget authority only dropped by $21,820. So that's, again, that's a real classic example of showing the lag in the cash that the district has. Our unspent budget authority basically is unchanged, we're at 14% for both the last two years. And again, without appropriate supplemental state aid increases, it puts a lot more pressure on the general fund to continue to operate the programs that the community would like to operate for its children. Real quickly, we'll talk about special education. We continue to do the things we need to do to appropriately meet the needs of those students. Thank goodness for Medicaid funding, because we had a net of $828,000 that helped us, that was applied directly against our Medicaid expenses for last year. But even with that, we had a deficit of about $807,000, and of course, we talked about that back in October. We are projecting a deficit for the end of this year at just under $889,000 in special education.
And recall that there's the, the funding level for students with special needs do not match the not match the expenses that come from serving those students. So, there is always a deficit that is incurred, and that deficit certainly is one of those aspects of making sure that we have high levels of service for all students. So, that's one of those aspects. You can see that that's increasing from last year to this year, but that's due to the fact that we know funding is not going to match the expenses that we have.
And, and the other thing, and if you'll recall on our presentation back in October, is that we count our students in October of 2015, and students flow in and students flow out, but we don't receive any additional dollars for that. So, you could have any number of students that are determined to need special education programming, but there's no funding for it after the count date. So, that's another reason why we will run into, will pull into a deficit. And you've got, and as we showed last year, you could, that could be a pretty wide swing, especially if you get a very high, an unfortunate situation, we have a student that has some very severe needs, that we want to do everything, you know, we want to do what we need to do to support that student, but that's where we can run into a real deficit problem fairly quickly.
Remind us again how we fill that deficit?
We have to fill that deficit, where we request the School Budget Review Committee for authority. And so, we did that, $807,000, the board approved that back in November or December. But I won't actually receive that cash until next year when we ask the board to levy in $807,000 in additional property taxes to cover that deficit. So, it's an expense that happened in 2015, 16, that I won't get the dollars for until 2017, 18. That's why I told you it's a two-year lag on special ed.
So, it's local property taxes?
Local property.
But it's all local property taxes.
Local property taxes is how we fill that deficit.
That will have to cover that deficit, that's correct.
It's an underfunded expectation that comes from the federal government, state government, and they know that it's not going to be, the revenues will not match the expenditures.
Unfunded mandate?
Underfunded.
Underfunded, yes.
A better way to describe it. And the School Budget Review Committee does control what the waitings that the district will see for additional funding for students that are, that are, that are within the special education program. Those numbers haven't changed, I think, in my entire time that I've been as, it's, it's, it's only changed a couple of times in my 30-plus years. It doesn't change, it doesn't change very often, the waiting, so.
And remind me, Doug, did, last year, did we decide not to levy the full amount?
We, we deferred 50% of that for this year.
Okay.
And we, but with, with the understanding that we were pretty much going, no matter what, we were going to levy that other half for next year.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I, we'll talk about, like I said, but we'll talk about that in March.
Okay.
And that was part of the expectation where our cash balances have dropped. We knew that going into this year.
Okay.
And so, in summary, we just need to continue to, you know, watch our budget, funding changes in order to make decisions that, one, help the children, the schools, because that's what we're here for, and then make sure that we maintain a positive financial condition for the school district. And then, one other thing, I do have to, again, thank Donell, Kerry, and my team again, for all of the work that they do to help pull this together. They're really the ones that probably should be giving this report, not my, not me, so.
Any other questions for Doug?
This is a big thank you to Doug at this time, too. The work that he puts into this and, and the knowledge that he has is, is just top throughout the state. So, thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I like, I like that you, you put it into terms and explain it so we can understand it, too. So, thank you, because it's very complicated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to approve this?
No, just a report.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the approval of the resolution directing the advertisement for sale, approving electronic bidding process, and approval for official statement, approving official statement.
Okay, I guess that's me again. I know we don't have a slide for the community to see tonight, but in your board packet is the resolution authorizing your approval of the advertisement for the sale of the $32 million in general obligation bonds for our three elementary projects, approving the electronic procedures, and approving the official statement. I do know that you were sent an electronic copy of the official statement. That, if, if anybody in the community would like to have a copy of that, just contact my office, and we certainly can send that to you. That document's 144 pages in length, and it basically is our 2015, 16 school year audit, plus the other financial information, and information about the school district as a whole, and our community as far as population, what assess valuations are, community growth, who our largest employers are, that sort of thing. It is a requirement of, that SEC, oh, heck, where's it at?
Rudy.
I didn't hear something. 15, Section 15, I believe. I had it here somewhere. 15C-2-12 of the SEC, there. I had to find it somewhere. And it is a requirement for us in order for us to sell the bonds. We will be advertising in the paper as per the agreement, and we will be using Spear Financial, as a part of their service to us, we'll be using their competitive business, electronic businesses, business bidding system in order to receive those bids when they come in on the 7th of February.
And Doug, is there a copy of that on our district website of?
The OS?
Yes.
We can certainly have one put on there if you'd like.
Okay.
If you should.
Because there might be, it's, it's interesting reading because it does talk about everything in the district.
And like I said, the biggest part of the OS is our audit, and our, and that's already on the website.
Okay.
But if, like I said, we can certainly place it on the website, or if anybody wants a copy of it, they certainly can contact our office, and we would send it to them.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing that's really missing on the OS is the final percentages for, for the rate for the bond sale, because we won't know that. And we won't know our bond rating until, in about two weeks, I think we'll know what our bond rating's at.
And this is just a reminder that February 7th, the bids will come in for the, the bond. We will have a special meeting at 5:00 PM, and that'll be at the central office, 1002 West First Street, and approve the low bidder for that bond. So, again, exciting times, and this is just the final step to, to move this approval process forward. Andy, so that's at the admin building? It will be, correct, yep.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution, and this will be a roll call?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Directors adopt the resolution directing the advertisement for the sale of $32 million of general obligation school bonds, Series 2017, approving electronic bidding procedures, and approving official statement as presented.
Thank you, Susie. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, there'll be a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Hasman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It's been approved, so moving on then. Thank you, Doug, to item J on the agenda, which is approval of substantial completion of the Southdale Classroom remodeling, Phase Three.
And in your handout, there's, you should have a summary sheet for that. The original contract was awarded back to Peters Construction in December of 2015. Total original budget amount with the contract amount to Peters plus contingency plus design fees was $488,474. Total expended as of January 19th was $463,312, so, or came in $25,162 under budget. And there should not be any additional bills to that, so that should be the final number.
That's great news. All right, do I have a motion to approve the classroom remodeling?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the Southdale Elementary Classroom remodeling project, Phase Three. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided on this contract must be filed within the next 30 days.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not up this time, Doug. Moving on to item K on the agenda.
I didn't mean to monopolize.
Discuss and set a public hearing on the purchase of land. Dr. Pettit?
Yes, and we do have a presentation to share with, with everybody. This is really an exciting time and an opportunity to talk about some land acquisition as we look to the future, especially as we look to the needs we have as a district centered around the high school and, and our capacity challenges at the high school. This is just prior conversations as a board. We, we've had some closed sessions, and I know that the board has asked administration to explore and gather some, some data surrounding some of these bullet points. So, hopefully, this presentation, and please ask questions as we go through this, will help provide guidance and thoughts as we, we look to the next steps. One of the, the slides, I think, is really important that we always keep in front of us, is our past, current, and future enrollment. This is a slide that we saw last board meeting from RSP and Associates. You can see that this goes back now several years, and, and we are anticipating to see an additional 16% to 18% increase in our enrollments over the course of the next 10 years. So, it's a, it's a challenge as we, we look to the future, but certainly an envious position that we're in compared to a lot of districts across the state. The secondary enrollments, as we heard last meeting, we are going to be overcapacity at the Cedar Falls High School by 2019, 2020. That certainly is, is a challenge, knowing what we heard, that we will have close to 450 kindergarteners for the next several years. And as those larger classes go through our system, we know that's going to eventually impact our high school and continue to grow the number of students within that high school setting. I think one of the greatest challenges that we have, that we really need to look at, is when do we need to add a portable potentially into the high school? What does that mean for educational learning, and also the environment within that high school? I did show and share as well the elementary projections that we learned about from the last meeting, and, and again, we are growing excessively at the elementary level as well, and those numbers will come through the system and impact our secondary, especially our high school shortly. So, previous information that we've shared, and this is information from a lot of our public meetings, our informational meetings, our public forums that, that have been held, as well as information that the, the board has been involved with for the last several years. We know that currently we had a rough estimate to add on to the high school, and that was roughly about a $60 million expenditure. Our high school currently sits on 17 acres of land. We know that the recommendations that we've had through studies show that we need to have roughly 50 acres of land to be, have the room that we need to have educationally, as we look at parking, as we look at physical education spaces, green spaces, practice spaces, and then having the interior spaces for our high school that meets the needs of a growing community, as well as the educational responsibility we have for that high level of production for our students. We know that if we did add on to our high school, our current high school, there would be no additional room to expand. That would be sound additions due to the constraints of interior rooms, flow of, of the hallways, as well as just parking and access to that site. We would anticipate that within 15 years, even after spending $60 million, that building then would be overcapacity. So, it's really a $60 million expenditure for a 15-year payout. So, financially, that's a challenging struggle when you look at that. Rough estimates that we had recently to build a new high school was between $80 to $85 million. We know, again, studies show that we need to have roughly around that 50 acres of land to be able to have something that would be expandable into the future, and certainly meet the needs of students as we looked for, hopefully, a 50-year lifecycle of a building. We know that we need to have those better educational spaces that match the changing needs of the focus in education. And we also know that's going to allow us to, to look into the future and have expansion as necessary. I thought this was interesting. The city of Waukees, and the Waukees Community Schools just recently purchased jointly 160 acres of, of land for their second high school, their, a new, new high school that's going to be built, they anticipate by 2020, 2021 is when that's going to be under construction and hopefully finished at that time. So, that is something that is just a very interesting component as we look at those districts within the state of Iowa that certainly are growing. One of the directions by the board was to share, again, some of those sites, the land that we reviewed several years ago, as well as land that have recently sold across the community. As a district, we did review, we explored the land that is off of Green Hill Road in Hudson, due to some financial constraints that was not feasible for the district, that two to two and a half years ago. That site did recently sell for $86,000 per acre. It was 50 acres in size for $4.3 million, and that was finalized in April of 2016. This has come up in, in several discussion points as we've held public forums. Once again, if we, as we've had public input sessions from multiple constituent groups across the community, the mall has come up as an avenue to, to potentially explore. Two years ago, we did explore this, we did look at this, we went through and, and found out the acreage of that site. Plus, also had a very high-level cost analysis, what that would take to be able to potentially renovate or turn into some green spaces. And it's really cost prohibitive to, to look at that as a site. And to come up to even be close to something that would meet the standard of the studies that we've had for acreage size, to come close to that 50 acreage size, we would need to eliminate several strong growing commercial sites that are around that area. And we know that's just not beneficial for our community as a whole. So, this is something that we reviewed, financially not feasible, certainly due to multiple reasons.
Is that also because we don't pay property taxes?
That is correct. We do not pay property taxes, and, and I believe it comes out to about 40 acres if you look at every single university front building and commercial property that is located right off a university. And a lot of those are extremely strong and thriving, and that would be a detriment that would take off those buildings from the tax rules.
And that would mean acquiring the recently renovated Hy-Vee, acquiring the new site that is going to be the new furniture store that, so all those plans.
All those components, all those pieces. It would take all those properties. And, and again, that's one of those aspects, when you just look at the mall site, it's 31 acres. To get to 40 acres, which is still 10 acres below the, the recommended amount, it would take all those commercial properties.
And you'd have to make them whole.
Correct.
And for sale.
And for sale, correct.
Yeah.
And at this time, none are, so. We've also, throughout the process, have been approached about the Sartorio Hospital site. That is a, a property that currently is not available, but may be available in the future. It's one of those sites that, as they, they look at building a new hospital, it is a site that's centrally located in about four blocks, roughly, from our, our high school site, three to four blocks. The challenge with this site, we, we have had a very high cost analysis for this site. We, we have approached an arch, our architectural firm, and have asked, what would it cost, or what would it look like if we remodeled this into an educational building, structure? That is cost prohibitive, just because of the structure and the makeup of the building. The challenge is as well, it's landlocked, and expansion would not be likely. Also, it would be very cost prohibitive if we look at trying to subdivide the two sites, and we have split programming going between two sites, three to four blocks away. It challenges us with, with cost for staffing and duplication of staffing, loss of educational time to, to move back and forth, because we have a lot of our high school students that will share classes regardless of what grade they might be in. So, there's just a lot of redundant costs that just would not be effective or efficient in that process, and, and cost prohibitive to remodel. Our current high school site is 16.9 acres, roughly 17 acres. So, even if you combine these two properties, which are, again, three to four blocks apart, you'd still be about 16 acres below the recommended amount for a feasible secondary campus, high school campus, as you look to the future. We've also looked outside the city limits. This was a discussion where we approached several different areas, property owners, and, and looked at opportunities. Several of these opportunities were to the west, even of Union Road. What we found is, number one, we have to be cognizant of district boundaries. Remember that Highway 20 is not in the Cedar Falls School District. So, sometimes what we heard through public forums and public dialogue was, there's a lot of available land right off of Highway 20. That is not in our district. That is not in our district, so we can't purchase property or build a high school within those areas. Number two, what we found out is the costs per acres are roughly the same price as what we are looking at with a recommendation that will be coming forward, but utilities to be run to those sites became cost prohibitive. It certainly was much more expensive to run water and sewer and electrical service further out in the country outside of the city limits than would be with some of the current options that we have available to us. And we also looked at the transportation costs for students, as well as the walkability, bikeability access, because we want to make sure we have kids that can access the site, not only now, but well into the future. So what we are proposing, and this is a proposed purchase, is to look at setting a public hearing, and there'll be some other components that we'll talk about here, of land from the University of Northern Iowa. They have available 50 acres, which is just west of their campus, west of the Unidome, just north of 27th Street. You can see those 50 acres will meet the requirement that our studies have shown for a high school, not only now, but also well into the future. And it is also currently used as some practice spaces, some intramural spaces, and in fact, we use one of those fields for our high school practices, which we maintain. So it is area that's not going to take over farmland or other property that could be used in the future, residentially or commercially, because this is land that would only be utilized for educational purposes, working with you and I. So some of the questions that have arisen from this is cost. 50 acres of land, the cost for this would be $1.24 million or $24,800 per acre. We know that that is a tremendous price for large acres of land, let alone small acres of land within the city limits of Cedar Falls, that can be utilized for a school structure or school building.
And Dr. Patti, back to earlier slide, you said 50 acres just sold recently for 86,000 per acre?
Correct.
Okay, just as a comparison.
Yep, that property off of Green Hill and Hudson sold for 86,000 per acre, correct. We also know that within this price, the $1.24 million, $500,000 is earmarked to go to future moving of those green spaces, intramural spaces, PE spaces. So that is money that we would have expended to add on to any of the land where a high school could go. So those green spaces would be, hopefully, co-use spaces, because we have a great relationship working with you and I, and certainly try to maximize spaces, not only for our students, but for our community and for you and I, intramural and extracurricular activities. So when you take that out, knowing that that would be dollars that we would have expended anyway to upgrade and update a green space site for a school building, that comes to a cost really of $740,000 for the land, or about $14,800 per acre. And we, you know, 10, 11 years ago, believe we spent about $9,000 an acre for the elementary site. So again, when you look at 10 years down the road for 50 acres of space, this is a tremendous opportunity. We also know that the current use of the land for intramural, PE spaces, green spaces will continue until if or when funding is available for a new high school. So there's an opportunity to continue to have that as those green spaces up until the time when we have those funding available for a high school site. So as we look at why this site, this is a slide that we saw last board meeting from RSP, as they look at where we know potential growth will occur across our community. Number one, just to kind of have everybody see the map and where we are talking about, the large red star kind of in the middle left-hand section of the map is the site location that we are talking about for the 50 acres to purchase. Over the course of the next five years, the yellow shaded areas, kind of golden rod shaded areas, are projected to have the growth within five years. So as you look to the west of that site, you look to the north of that site, and certainly down south where the new elementary is going to go in, those are projected to have residential and potential commercial growth over the course of the next five years. As you look at the purple area there on the map, that is projected to have continued growth over the next 10 years. We know along University Avenue, especially as we look westward, that is typically where growth could occur, will occur within our community, with a natural area for where utilities are and where they can expand into over the course of that timeframe.
You're talking about residential growth there, too?
Yes, that's typically going to be residential growth. Some of those sites could be commercial growth as well. Right now, it's, most of it is owned ag residential, so most of it's going to be hopefully residential. So as we then look to also future considerations, as points of discussion, last time we had this as, through community forums, through other community input sessions, a lot of discussion about accessing and out of that site. You know, a lot of people see that site as it currently sits, with the access road coming in and out on 27th Street, with access to the east of the site, which would be Panther Express Parkway. What we do know, though, this summer, 2017, the Green Hill Road extension is going to be completed. So to kind of orientate to this map as well, right where the north is at, just to the west of that top part of the map, is the 50 acres for this site. And directly south of that is the new Green Hill Road. So when the Green Hill Road extension is completed this summer, not only will this site have direct access to 27th Street, to Union, or to Hudson, it'll have direct access down to University Avenue, but it'll also have direct access to cross Hudson Road over to Highway 58, and to have access to all the four-lane roads really intersecting throughout Cedar Falls. So that is going to continue to add greater access to this site, but it's also going to create greater access to the land around this area, which will be then infill developed and more access roads in and out. We also are excited, because we know that this site has much more walkability, bikeability, as we look not only short-term but long-term, as subdivisions fill in, the expectations with walking paths and bike paths, as well as the access to the overall bike paths in our community are certainly exciting now and into the future. So our recommendation as administration is to set a public hearing regarding the purchase of property from the University of Northern Iowa for future school uses and expansion as we look for our high school bond now and into the future. This is a tremendous opportunity, not only to partner with the university, but also to have a site that's going to serve the needs, I think, of the Cedar Falls Community School District, short-term and certainly over the course, hopefully, of the next 50 to 60 to 70 years. Questions?
So just to be clear, of the purchase price, there's $500,000 of the purchase price, which are given to the seller, but that $500,000 is used to move the fields that are currently on that site, and probably put them in that general area as well, and so there'd be a good chance that we would be able to benefit from those?
Yes, through all the discussions that we've had, that's the intent, that those fields, if and when the funding's available to build a high school on that site, those would be moved at that time, with $500,000 of the purchase price being used to move those fields within that general vicinity, so those can be joint-used and certainly, hopefully, joint-operated. There are times of, especially intramurals, offset well with our times for some of our student athletic practices and intramural practices. Just makes sense still to help cost-share those facilities now and in the future.
So if you took that as a benefit out of that, really, that's why you're saying that the cost per acre comes down to the $14,800 by taking that out?
And it allows us to utilize the 50 acres much more efficiently and effectively into the future. You know, if we can use some of the other green spaces and help share those spaces with you and I, similar to what we do now with the use of the dome, the use of our softball facilities, it's a great opportunity to be able to then effectively utilize those 50 acres as strategically as we can, and then share some other green spaces around that site.
And what is it being used for now?
Right now, there are some intramural fields that are there, there's some rugby fields, as well as some soccer.
And we're using some of those now, right?
We are, actually, yes. We actually maintain one of the fields there, and that's used for our high school soccer practices. Correct. It's a great working relationship that we have with the university, and we foresee that to continue long into the future.
Andy, part of the timeliness of this is we do have an agreement that expires in March.
Yes, this has been approved by the Board of Regents, and it has a sunset, and so we know that coming up at the end of March, that this price may not be fixed, and certainly it's something that we think is a great benefit, not only to our taxpayers, but certainly as we look to the future of education in Cedar Falls.
And correct me if I'm wrong, when we were originally talking or reviewing this site as a potential, did you and I have additional land that should we need any more acreage in the future would be available, or?
The hope was really to be able to use some of those other green spaces around the site, so we can kind of cost-share those and be able to use those green spaces in a mutual beneficial way. There are some potential other accessible acres, maybe as we look at a developer to the west, but the hope is that 50 acres, especially with the sharing of green spaces and co-use spaces, would certainly meet the needs of the district. Now, that doesn't preclude the fact that we may, if and when one of the developers in that area sells adjacent land, we might inquire at the time to see what that would be per acre, just to make sure we don't hold any future boards accountable to decisions we're making now, because everybody looks back hindsight at the current high school site, when there was the availability to have land from all the way over to Hudson Road. At the time, the decision was not to purchase that, which everybody understands why, financial accountability and other aspects, but if that acreage was available now, we certainly would purchase it.
And Hudson Road was gravel.
And Hudson Road was gravel, correct. And all that was far enough, so, correct.
Well, I think we've seen the benefit of being proactive between the city and the district in our current elementary site. That's been a great look ahead and worked out very well for everyone.
Extremely beneficial, especially when we look at what the trajectories are for our future growth five and 10 years down the road. We fully anticipate that to happen, and we know this is an extremely attractive place to not only come to work, live, and play in as a city, but also educational qualities that attract people here.
Would it be possible, Andy, for you to be able to put this report up on our website?
It is up there.
It is, okay, all right, thank you.
It is up there.
I didn't look ahead of time.
So the tentative timeline with this, if so directed tonight, the board would set a public hearing for the February 13th board meeting. We are not required to have a public hearing, is the guidance that we received, but we think it's very important to be able to have that. That way, people can come and express their thoughts about the purchasing of this land. And then on February 27th, following the public hearing two weeks prior, if the board so decides, then we'd move forward with the purchase of the property. The schedule for payment would be $610,000, half of the purchase price down, and then $305 over the course of the next two years, and then the property would be deeded to the Cedar Falls School District.
And we have those funds available?
We do, correct. Those funds are available within our save and physical plan equipment. So those are funds that we have access to at this time.
Okay.
So I'm sure a question. If we proceed this way, and it puts us on a path to eventually build a high school at that site, pending funding, you know, if and when the funding is available, how do we fiscally, in a fiscally responsible way, use the existing high school site? What uses do you think that that could fill within our community, within our school district, as far as leveraging those tax dollars that have been spent on that site?
And if I understand your question, you know, what could that potential site be utilized for in the future? You know, I think those are discussions we continuously will have to have, especially as we look at a future bond referendum, when we look at what it will take to go to a new high school. And I think that's the opportunity where, you know, the purchase of the land is going to be separate from the potential use of the current high school, plus the potential aspects of trying to have a bond referendum be successful for that amount of revenue that would be needed for a high school. But I, you know, through the previous discussions that we've had, there's several aspects within the district. We have several buildings that we own that could consolidate down into a centralized location. We know there's parts of the high school that really aren't going to be salvageable into the future. There's going to be some sections that are the older sections of the building that are going to be best served to be tore down, because the cost to renovate, the cost for HVAC adaption to those areas, is just really cost prohibitive. Also, there's some hope, just through some dialogue that we've had with other entities, that there's going to be some interest to be able to take over sections of the building, or maybe the entire site for other commercial uses or public uses. Or with, you know, roughly 17 acres in the center of the city, could that be other infill areas for residential homes or houses that could continue to add tax-based possibilities for our community? So I think there's really some strong possibilities as we look to the future, but I'd hate to have those pinned down now, as we know that those conversations will have to evolve.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Madam President, with great enthusiasm, I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education set a public hearing date on February 13th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, for the purchase of property from the University of Northern Iowa, located on West 27th Street, Cedar Falls, Iowa, 506-13.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item L, the approval of the ASME agreement. Adrian, Dr. Talbot.
Thank you. Just remind the board that the food and nutrition staff are represented by the Association of Federal, State, County, and Municipal Employees, that is their recognized bargaining agent, and the district has been approached by a full-time business agent of that organization with a view to discussion about extending the collective bargaining agreement, which is currently in effect and commenced on the 1st of June, excuse me, the 1st of July of 2015, and is currently scheduled to expire on the 30th of June, 2018. Following informal conversations about the merits of the extension of the contract, it's administratively being recommended to you that, in fact, the current agreement be extended for a period of two years. In the 2018-19 year, the wage increase for that bargaining unit employees would be 30 cents per hour, and employee contribution to health insurance premium would increase from what would otherwise be $1 per month, and is currently $1 a month, to $10 per month. All other language items in the current agreement would remain in effect and unchanged. In the second year, the extension, which would be 2019-20, the wage increase would be 25 cents an hour. The employee contribution to single insurance premium would again be $10 per month, and all other language items in the contract would remain per the current agreement. Based on conversation we had during our exempt session with the board and comments and questions that you asked, I want to ensure you that there would be, within the written agreement, a clause that would basically provide that the parties would be able to reopen negotiation over any article or provision in the agreement which is affected by changes in the Iowa Code, Chapter 20, or other legislative changes which impact the agreement. And so essentially, it is the belief of the administration and ASME that it is to our mutual benefit to extend the agreement and then have it expire on June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Talbot?
So that last clause, doesn't that, I'm obviously not a lawyer, doesn't that invalidate the extension? Because given that Chapter 20 is going to be affected, doesn't that just mean that we're going to wind up renegotiating anyway?
Well, at the moment, it's the speculation of what will change Chapter 20, which is causing the bargaining unit to feel quite unsettled. And so essentially, both sides are recognizing the realities that if something changes in Chapter 20, it could require us to revisit aspects of the collective bargaining agreement, which today are legal, which could then be illegal.
Oh, okay, so we'd be required to?
We may well be required to. In the event that there are other changes to Chapter 20, for example, a topic that may be currently a mandatory subject of bargaining, that would become permissive. That would become permissive, then it would be up to the two parties to basically say, let's sit down and talk about and review the implications of that change on the agreement that we have. And ASME recognized the necessity that we have to have such a clause and in fact, we're very helpful in offering some language suggestions to that effect. And so, we feel very comfortable that this is to the employees' benefit, but also to the districts as well, because it will certainly allow Doug to more accurately project the costs of budgeting and running the food service operation once we have an additional elementary school in the district. And the proposed wage increase in each of the two years is certainly quite modest, noting the increase in insurance premium from $1 a month to $10 a month. So, that's why we're recommending it. We feel this is a fiscally responsible thing to do and allows us to sit down and have further conversation if necessary.
Thank you, Adrian. I know that it's your relationship with them that is very beneficial to us and the district and you make this process smooth for us and thank you for sharing this information with us. Doesn't anybody have any questions for Adrian before we approve this?
We have a long history of multi-year agreements with ASME, so this is not something that is out of the norm for them or us as a district. So, this is kind of continuation of that, I guess, pattern.
And I know there's other team members at this table too, so thank you, Doug, also for crunching the numbers too. Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the ASME agreement?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on then to chapters one and two, our book study, Fierce Conversation. So, the Board of Education has, is one of our board goals, has agreed to read a book, Fierce Conversation, and our administrators are reading it or have read it or walking through the process. They're farther along. So, we have some questions that Dr. Patty sent to us this weekend and we're just going to open it up for conversation. Do you want to start it off?
Yes, if that's okay. And again, the questions that I sent out certainly are not questions that we have to go through verbatim. They're really just guiding questions for discussion. It's an extremely beneficial book. I'm not sure if many people in the audience have read this or not. It's a book that's been around for a while. The entire administrative team, besides one individual, is going through the training this year of Fierce Conversations. And sometimes when you hear the title, read the title of Fierce Conversations, it can kind of evoke different emotions. So, that was really the first guiding question that I had through this process was, has your perception of what a fierce conversation is changed from the first time you've heard the title of the book to now reading the first two sections of the book? Because I think that's important for people to understand what certainly is involved with a fierce conversation and what that means.
Well, I think you're right. I think fierce sort of gives the impression that it's a negative, aggressive, scary kind of thing, especially aggressive, but I think it's more proactive conversations is what I came away with it.
I think it's also meant, for me, it meant finding your voice, to be able to find your voice when you're having a conversation and not being afraid to find your voice when you have to have difficult discussions.
I love the front page when it talks about what is the definition of fierce, because when I think of fierce, I thought of confrontational. When you want to have a fierce conversation with somebody, it means it's going to be contentious in some aspects, but it talks on the front cover, it's robust, it's intense, it's strong, it's passionate, it's unbridled. And I think one of the sections that it talked about, making sure that you come out from behind yourself into the conversation, to make those conversations real with individuals. And it was really an interesting concept with this, because they talked about in this book, and I think it was on page number six, the conversation is the relationship. And they quoted that several times and that was another guiding question. What does that mean to everybody here as you read the book, that the conversation is relationship? And do you agree or disagree with the fact that that was a statement within the first opening chapter?
I think I'd agree with that. I mean, and for me, I've always been a direct person, so I think I was having fierce conversations, but they weren't, they're not the right kind of fierce conversations. So, to understand, I mean, it does have you put yourself into the, how everything impacts everyone around you and what the immediate impact is and what the future implications of those conversations are. So, I felt their redefinition of what a fierce conversation was, as you said, was very helpful and it is, and it sets the basis for your relationship. Trust and everything grows out of those conversations and depending on how, what kind, you can absolutely be that kind of fierce, but you know, depending on what kind of fierce you are, it can dictate what your relationship is as you move forward with those, you know, those groups and teams.
I like the example that they used where the newly married couple, they would be having a conversation and then the week later, they would revisit it and in his mind, he's thinking, we just talked about that. Why are we coming back and revisiting it? But the importance of coming back and being able to talk about that and the richness of the conversation. And I know that I'm a person that does that. I'm sure my husband probably rolls his eyes many times thinking, we just talked about that last weekend. But I just think it adds a lot to our relationship as board members when we continually visit about those items or something that we have an issue about.
I think it allows us to keep, when we have those conversations over and over and over, we don't always give all the details in the first conversation, do we? It's maybe the second conversation or the third so that we can go deeper into the conversation, which builds a better relationship.
It's coincidental timing, but with the last item about extending the agreement with ASME and President Kyle mentioned the relationship that we enjoy with that bargaining unit. Certainly, over the time that I've been here and I've been here just one year longer than Doug, I know that in the meaning of the term of the book, fierce conversations have occurred in that department, the need to support the program financially with the revenue garnered from the sales of food and so forth to the students. And he's explained the finances and the economics to the staff so they understand it when their student count is down. The Association has come to me from time to time when there were employees that weren't meeting expectations in the view of the coworkers, seeking to try to have ways that we could help them meet expectations as opposed to maybe some stereotypical thoughts we might have that, well, a union will want to protect all its members regardless, and that's not always the case and certainly not the case with that particular group. So, as a consequence, now we find ourselves in unusual circumstances, our foundation of a robust relationship's been built over time. And so now we can propose an unusual extension and we're all confident and comfortable it's going to be mutually beneficial.
It built that trust.
And I think it's understanding, they use the beach ball concept, which through the training, we've all received a beach ball. So, you know, you think about a beach ball that has multiple colors on the ball. One stripe might be green, one stripe might be red, one stripe might be yellow. And you think about the context of trying to get to different people's reality and the book did a great job of describing that, that I might live in the green stripe. So, every day I get communicated to from that green stripe perspective. Everything that I hear, everything that I see, the decisions I make or make are based on that green stripe. However, Joyce might come in based on the yellow stripe. So, when I say Joyce, I've got a great idea based on my green stripe perspective, she sees it from the yellow stripe and says, whoa, wait a second, what about these aspects? What about this? You know, here's the other aspect that could be a concern. So, I think it's really important and principle one was, how do you interrogate reality to get to that perspective of everybody to understand all the different unintended consequences, but also potential better selections and choices? So, that was one of the guiding questions, you know, as each of us on this Board are leaders for, in a lot of different ways across the community, within each of your professions, how do you or how have you gone about to really get that perception on everybody's reality out into the open so all assumptions can be tested? Does anybody have a catch-22 that you utilize or that you've heard about potentially?
I know, and this is a regional bias, when I'm sitting down next to some, when I'm sitting down meeting with somebody and we find out we're both from New York, one of us will invariably say, okay, let's cut the bullsh. And what exactly do you want? Why are we sitting here? And I found I can get there really, really quickly and it's kind of this little fake bond New Yorkers like to think they have with each other. But usually, I let the other person be honest first, which I'm not saying is the right strategy, but that's what I think I've been tending to do.
And that's kind of the, one of the strategies that they talked about is the mineral mining strategy where, again, you throw out the thoughts and let other people give you feedback first. It's really not to have any preconceived ideas going into a conversation, but also just trying to invoke that component of dialogue.
On the beach ball, I think there's a couple of different aspects. You've got each of us come to the Board with different perspectives and different life experiences and talents. So, each of us come with different perspectives about what's going on here. So, there's an individual aspect of that that I think is important to recognize. Then there's another global aspect of that and that is that, you know, everyone that sits on this Board and sits around this table is very, you know, you don't need to convince us that education is important. I mean, for those of us on the Board, this is a volunteer position. This isn't, this isn't a career move. And, you know, the contribution, however, you know, because we could all be looking at it in one color. And the reality could be another thing out there, not saying that it is or not, but I think it's important to understand that, you know, we're all individually maybe drinking our own Kool-Aid and then we all as a Board are drinking the same Kool-Aid in certain aspects as we look at different topics and, you know, the importance of having, and I'll use instead of fierce, assertive conversations to probe what really is going on and understand and see all the sides of it.
So true. That self-fulfilling prophecy sometimes when you have that group think mentality. So, it's important to be able to get those assertions out on the table and make sure that you take that honestly with the right intent, to be able to understand what all those assertions are. I really did not intend this to be a question that we'd answer, but just kind of a question that is rhetorical in nature. And it goes back to that master and courage, master the courage to interrogate reality, because I think when the book asked this question and said, if you wanted three honest answers, what three people would you go to to get that honest answer? So, this was a rhetorical question that I put down. Instead of saying, who would you go to, through your reading of the book, through all the life experiences that you have and all the talents that each of you bring to the table, what made me self-reflect was when I thought the question through, would I be on anybody's list if they were coming to me for an honest answer? It was really kind of a nice self-reflection rhetorical question to ask myself, do I have the fierce conversations with people that they would come to me for those honest answers depending on what they wanted an honest answer about? So, I'm not asking the Board to answer that question. Give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. You don't want an honest answer? No, no. Unless you want to. I'm just saying that was more of a rhetorical question, but it really was that self-reflection as you, as we all look at, how do we interrogate reality? Are we people that do give those honest answers and confront reality in a way that's productive as we look to the future? And I thought that was really intriguing.
But it's also situational and not just person. For example, I'm going to have one kind of conversation with you while we're here on the TV. I'm going to have another conversation with you if I run into you somewhere.
And you'll have a different conversation with peers at work than you would with your home, probably.
No, I'm talking about the same people. If I'm sitting with somebody at work during a department meeting, we're going to get to one level of reality. And then if we're out together at a different time, we're going to get, and if it's in a one-on-one conversation, I tend to be a lot more honest.
I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right.
You know, I've told people at work after they've advocated a particular position, when I get them alone, I say, okay, all this crap aside, why do you, why do you really want me to vote this way?
You become more fierce.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, I don't, I think that's just kind of a natural thing. I don't think it's necessarily a function of the person. I think it's the person and the context where you're encountering them.
And sometimes it is situational and that was what was interesting, because it was a different perspective for me with Susan Scott's perception on that, because she talked about the orange, when you squeeze an orange, you squeeze an orange at work, if you squeeze an orange at home, if you squeeze an orange on vacation, what's going to come out of that orange? And that's orange juice. And I thought that was an interesting perspective because I think, you know, it kind of led into one of the other questions, number five. As Board members, does public perception sway sometimes how you interrogate reality or maybe how comfortable you are with the ability to really be yourself? Because sometimes versus on camera, versus off camera, versus individually, versus as a group conversation, it can be dramatically different. So, one of the things that I really picked up from this was, and it was one of those tidbits that came out of chapter number one with the master, or the ability to master the courage to interrogate reality. And I did her homework for a day. I tried to count the number of times I said but in a conversation with somebody saying something to me and I said, you know, that's a great idea, but, and replacing but with and. And I was amazed by the number of times that I've said but in conversations with individuals and trying to turn that into an and. Yes, so you're saying this and have you also thought about this? And is there an understanding that this is also going on? Did anybody take some of those homework components that she listed and maybe tried some of them throughout the book or throughout the last couple of weeks?
Well, the but one actually is a homework assignment I've given when I work, you and I college of business, we actually give them that assignment, so.
Did they ever come up with a number? Did somebody actually have people pick the numbers?
Well, what we asked them instead is as an experiment, try changing what you say for 24 hours and see if you can do it.
Yep.
And some of them can and the ones that did, then the next week, talk about how things were very, very different.
It changed the conversations, certainly. When you come across with a but versus an and in a conversation, the tone and the context, the conversation becomes more fierce, becomes more real with different options on the table, which I thought was really intriguing. Any other homework that people tried or other tidbits from the book that you might have tried?
I want to do the stump speech, but I'm actually intimidated, so I actually marked it and at some point, I'm just going to sit down and do it, but it seems almost, that seems terrifying to try.
I think you'd be good at it.
I do too.
Yeah, I think it might wind up a written, a written confirmation that I'm really a boring person. Have other people tried it?
No.
Stump speech?
You have people that you could go to for an honest response on that.
That's what I'm afraid of.
One of the components of this chapter, or principle two, really is, again, come out from behind yourself into the conversation, make it real. There's a seven-step process on pages 87 and 88, which I thought were really intriguing. We actually walked through those, through our training. And it really talks about identify the most pressing issue that you might have personally, professionally. How do you clarify the issue? Determine the current impacts of that, determine the future implications, and there's several subset questions underneath of this. Examine your personal contributions. What would be the ideal outcome? And then the final one is committing to action. And again, she talks throughout the book, how do you make sure you internalize those components? And one of the questions that they asked through the training, but I think it's also important to look at, as you look at those steps, as individuals, personally, professionally, maybe even as a group, which of those are strengths of you as an individual or do you think maybe strengths as us as a collective Board? Which are ones that we'd have to improve upon or maybe work on to ensure that we are able to come out from behind ourselves into the conversation to make those conversations more real as we focus on the future needs of not only us as a Board, but us as a district, us to ensure we're providing the best services for all of our kids?
I struggled with this one a little bit when I was, I went back and reread it and reread it and then I was, is that really a strength or is that one of my areas of growth? So, I put number four was a strength, but then I actually went back and read it and I was like, I'm not sure that's a strength. And then I thought number five would be the one that I would have an area of improvement, but maybe not necessarily on the Board, but maybe in other areas of my life. I was, I think that's what I was thinking when I was looking at those.
I found that step six, that was the thing that I thought that was probably maybe an area of growth, describe the ideal outcome, because I think we still go back to what's ideal for me. ideal for me and not what's really ideal, like for whatever is it for the group, for your family, for your work. What's the, you still go back to, well, the ideal outcome is, is based on what I am. You know, you've gone through, right, five steps, but you still go back to the ideal. Well, that's, it's, that's about me. And it's, so it's not about us at all.
Jenny?
Well, and I think, you know, committing to action, it's, even if you are lucky enough to have gotten through the whole process, committing to action and holding yourself or a group or whatever accountable, that's, that's always really where the rubber hits the road. So.
Is that your strength?
No. I, I'm great at pointing out the most pressing issue. And then, and then I'm like, oh, I get very passionate. And then, so I have, I have found a lot of areas for growth for myself in here. So.
Well, this is a good, good book study for us.
Yes.
Jeff, how about you?
Well, I'm an analytical guy, so.
We didn't know that.
We couldn't answer that one for you.
Areas of growth?
You know, I don't have a list in front of me. So you tell me. I'd say, you know, future, pretty good on strategy and, and analytical person of it. You know, you know, unintended consequences, you know, current impact. I mean, I would say I, I can see the future benefit and maybe not the current tribulation that it would take to get there.
Sure.
And, and that there are some really great benefits. And, but it, you'd have to drag us through a lot to get there.
Yeah, fair answer. Fair.
I think when we talk about the high school, I think that these are really good steps. I mean, we, so I think sometimes we jump ahead to the, what the, the, the ideal outcome, and we maybe even commit to some of it. But we need to go back and make sure that others are clarified with the issue, that they understand the current impact. I mean, I sort of saw that with some work that we're doing right now.
So what's your greatest strength then, Susan?
Oh, mine? Probably, in my mind, I have it clarified. It may not be for others.
And area of growth?
Probably same.
Same. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Done?
Well, I guess not quite as analytic as Jeff, but I'm pretty analytical.
Yes.
I mean, what I do for a living is make sure definitions are precise. So I'm very good at clarifying issues and I'm very good at poking holes.
Poking the bear.
Well, yeah, you poke a theorem and see if it breaks, you know? That's kind of what I do. And I would say the area for growth is, I think it's actually with the describing, determining the future implications.
Okay.
Unintended consequences, I don't. I need to work more on that.
She even talks about in the book that because of the nature of society and the day and age in the world, you cannot try to manage the world because of the, the rapid changes that are occurring. So those unintended consequences, what might be one today might not be one tomorrow, but there could be three other ones three days from now. So it's just such a rapidly changing environment. You, it's very difficult sometimes to predict what those could be.
Suzy, what's your area of growth?
Oh, the ideal.
The ideal?
The ideal. Yeah.
All right. Okay. Cabinet. Did you, do you remember what you said?
Mine for me is, I'm pretty good at listening.
Uh huh.
An area I need to work on is making sure that I'm not giving advice when I go through those steps. That's one of the things they talked about in our classes. You know, don't always give your advice or share your stories. And that's an area I need to work on.
That's a good one. Dan?
Well, I'm a double D in my personality. So that's usually means that I want to forge ahead and move on pretty quickly with things. And sometimes I don't probably really think out the unintended consequences of that. So that's why I'd be able to hand around people like Pam who can analyze things and Adrian and Doug, that they analyze those things a lot more to help me understand what those unintended consequences might be as we move.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Adrian? I know you shared the Ask Me story, but where's your, I mean, where's your area of growth?
I think I would say, developing both a lexicon and the courage to ask whether the emotion in what the other person is saying is the one that I'm detecting. Sometimes I think we tend to respond to questions people ask with data. And I don't ask myself often enough, why are they asking that question? What's, what's maybe behind the question? It may be something like fear. So maybe I should say, are you afraid of something? Now, depending on the relationship, maybe I'll, I'll learn some really interesting things. And a rational answer to the, a rational answer to the question, yes, I'm afraid of something, is probably not a very smart response and certainly not very helpful on my part. So I, I tend to be by nature a rational person. But this is just amplifying for me that fundamentally we're kind of emotional creatures.
Thank you. Thank you. How about Doug over there?
Well, Doug's a little late coming to the party on this book, so.
Okay. Well, then I won't put you on the spot.
I'd, I'd have to say, I'm, I'm going to domino off of Dan a little bit in the fact that I sometimes tend to have analysis paralysis. And it's good to have Dan on that other end to kind of show the light or show the direction a little bit. And I would also agree with the comments that Adrian made about taking that step back and asking, what's the reason behind the question? Those are, those are some things that, and another book that I happen to be reading sort of lines along that same line. And so.
You want to share? You have weakness? Oh, excuse me. Area of growth?
You know, it's been very interesting as, as we walk through this book.
That's not an answer.
Just to, sure, sure some of them. But it's the thing that everybody else has talked about. It's.
I'm sorry.
You're not.
Step number five to me is my personal contribution. To really analyze that. Because sometimes, you know, again, I think I, I see myself as trying to help serve other people in, in roles. What can I do to help them do the work that's necessary or help them, support them to do the work that they're ongoing? So really take that intrinsic look. What is my personal contribution? What do I add to this as an overall component? I think the future implications is something, sometimes it's analysis by paralysis. Sometimes it's, we're moving forward with an initiative and starting today. And it's just trying to make sure that you have all the components and at least you have thoughtfulness to know which way it could tip. What are those areas of pushback? What are those areas of growth? And do that thoughtfully, but certainly not with an over analysis component. And that's just so difficult to do because there's so many aspects that are unexpected or that you can't anticipate that come up in this day and age. Social media is wonderful with that. So you just never know the direction it could take or the direction it may go. Joyce?
I, I think I shared mine. I said the number four was a strength. And my area of growth is number five also. But I, I struggled answering that question. I went back and read these several times because I just, there were a couple of them. That's probably borderline for me, meaning that I, I think there's probably points in every one of these we all could say that we could work on. And I, I could say that, that I could work on all of these.
This isn't really a question. That's probably a quote maybe to, to kind of start looking at wrapping this up. The quote that I really liked, it was within the book, and Susan Scott said, "It's been said that while no single conversation is guaranteed to change the trajectory of a career, a company, a relationship, or a life, any single conversation can." I think that's important to realize that you don't know which conversations could change the trajectory of your relationship, working with individuals, working with a group, working with an organization. But any single conversation can change that trajectory. And I think that's important and certainly why fierce conversations are, are something to explore and looking at the seven principles embedded within a fierce conversation.
I think we've all, I would assume we've all experienced that on the board is, I so appreciate when people take the time to actually reach out to us rather than just go on social media and vent about something. Because there's so much context and background in all of these things, especially being an elected official, that most people who comment on social media don't have. And I would say that for our city council as well. I'm, I'm to the point, I'm not a fan of social media anymore because there's too much commenting without context. And so I hope people do take the opportunity to have a single conversation with us as we talk about these things. And that's why we're here. And a lot of times that can change either our perception or their perception. And it turns out to be a win-win for everyone. So.
Exactly.
Good comment. Good comment.
Book beneficial?
Yeah, very much so. Yeah.
It's always a, a great book to, to cause self reflection, I think, and an understanding of the relationships that we all have.
Thank you. So our next assignment, three and four? Or are you, are you going to let us know?
Well, how about if I, here's the question. I, I decided not to send out questions too far ahead of time because sometimes when you have questions, you read the chapters or read the principles with that perception of trying to answer the question.
I think they have cliff notes for these too, so.
They do. But do you want questions well in advance? Or these were more kind of big picture guiding questions? Is it okay?
Yeah. Yes. This is perfect.
So, okay. Yeah, I would say, let me send something out with a, a board update that'll talk about the next chapters and make sure that they're relevant chapters to, to pair together. But the next principle in chapter, or chapter three and four should pair well together. So that would probably be the intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board for, and cabinet for having this discussion this evening. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of different items. January 30th, 12:00 PM, noon, here in City Hall, we'll have the Aldrich Elementary School bid acceptance special meeting, February 7th at 5:00 PM. And that'll be back at 1002 West First Street, the school administrative offices, is the bond sale approval. That very straightforward would be obviously the, the low bidder and, and it's done pretty fluidly. We also have talked about February 27th with a work session at potentially 6:00 PM. I know that was, if, I'll send out a doodle, but one of the board goals is to explore benchmarking. And I know the benchmarking subcommittee would like just to, to have some discussion and dialogue with the full board. So I'll send out, just make sure that works for people, to be able to just have a, a work session prior to that meeting. We could also tie that into a conversation regarding just timeframes and things like that for board. Jeff, you look like you were going to say something.
No, I was going to say we should have a fierce conversation.
We can have a fierce conversation at that time. So the other thing that I had down was just a calendar update. It's that time of year where we'll set a school calendar. It's probably going to look very similar to what we have this year with Iowa code and the changes that were made at the legislative level where we can't start before August 23rd. If we look at what we did this year, August 24th is a Thursday, which may make sense to start. So we're just trying to put that together. That requires a public hearing and we'll bring that to the board here in the near future as well.
Is there information on the district website about last day of school?
There should be. Right now, the tentative.
I know, I know that you, that's not set, but I've, I've been hearing questions about that.
Yeah, right now, the last date officially is the June 5th for students, which is a Monday.
Okay.
We are trying to work through some scenarios potentially with our hours based calendar versus our days based calendar and look at some solutions that may be available. So.
Okay. Well, I didn't know where to refer, if you had information there or not.
They can just call us. So right now it's June 5th.
Do we have a quorum on the 30th?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Dr. Kenyon won't be here.
I cannot make, I cannot be there. I'm teaching.
Will everybody else be able to make it? Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Good. Thank you for that.
Questions, comments? Are you done? I'm sorry. Okay. Questions, comments, or concerns from board members?
Well, some of us are going down to the IASB lobby day tomorrow. So if you have anything you'd like us to present, ask, lobby for?
Remove the 2029 sunset.
Yes. One cent sales tax and keep it whole.
Keep it whole. Don't take water quality out of it.
And then another opportunity would be Friday at Area 267 at 4:30 will be the first legislative forum. And that first one is usually just kind of general. So you can speak, they'll talk about education. They'll talk about lots of things, but that, that's a good one. And I have seen their schedule and I sent it out to you, but I don't know when they're going to talk about education. Is that the second one, maybe?
I believe it's the second one coming up in.
The next?
Yes, the next one.
The next, February, mid-February. Yeah.
And, and I think the challenge right now legislatively, there's not been a lot of bills that have focused on education that have had legs through the process. So, you know, we're, originally we thought that there might be a lot of action early on in the session. It's taken a little bit longer. So again, I think the advocacy is important and to remember, you know, we, we are looking for funding to be able to know what our budget is coming up because that must be set here in, in April. We want to make sure that our extension of the one cent sales tax is important and a dialogue that we, we talk about. And certainly I think the importance and priority that public education holds throughout the state of Iowa, across all of our communities.
Do we have any sense what's going to happen with assessment with smarter balanced? I mean, they've delayed it, but I mean, if, if they don't do anything, what are people planning on doing? When does that test, when is it done? Or, I mean, will we just keep taking that if they don't support smarter balance?
Our understanding is the Iowa assessments will continue to be the state assessment until something else changes.
Even though it's not aligned with
That's correct.
everything we're teaching and what kids are learning.
Within the governor's proposal and budget request, there was no funding to support smarter balance next school year. And in fact, the Department of Education came out to say that they're waiting and not going to enact that for next year. There was a bill earlier on this session that asked to go through the entire process once again and, and review which assessment should be used across the states. And I've, that has not moved out of committee at this time. So we'll have to wait to see where that goes. The hope is that people come to a conclusion that it has to be aligned to what the essential learnings and standards are that we expect all kids to, to know and showcase.
It will be a shame because of all the work that
That's right.
they put into the smarter balance, that they just throw it out and use something else.
To align what, what is being taught with what is being assessed. Yeah.
In a general sense, several of the task force they've had, they had a task force on the calendar, which was then just ignored. And they had a task force on smarter balance, which has now been ignored. I mean, who is that a conversation with? Because why, I mean, why have task force if you're not going to take the advice of your task force?
That would be a conversation with, I think, the legislators. They, the recommendation of the task force was that the legislature would enact smarter balanced. It was actually something that was on session delay last session, which means that if they didn't act on it, then it would be up to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education, then after the legislative session, said, "We're moving forward with smarter balance." But they don't have the mechanism to fund it. So I think the conversation really is with legislators to say, please follow the recommendation of the task force. But if, if more importantly, the decision should not necessarily lie with the legislature, it should lie with the State Board of Education because they are intimately involved with what best practice is for education. But they also then have a more streamlined communication with educators across the state. So I think the conversation is legislators to encourage them to follow the work of the, the task force, but also then the decision should be shifted to the State Board of Education.
Thank you. I know.
Looking at Dan and Pam to, thumbs up or thumbs down on that one, but.
Just a reminder that the Pete Junior High, Holmes Junior High and the high school, parent, teacher, together, the PAT, is having a combined meeting in that some of us will be at. And that's Monday, the 30th of January at 6:00 PM at the high school. And we welcome all the junior high parents, high school parents for question answers, topic discussion.
Thank you, Suzy. Anything else?
Along that line, are, as far as speaking to different, so the example in concrete, did somebody go and speak to the Board of Realtors in Waterloo Cedar Falls? I had a Realtor came, I was talking to a Realtor yesterday in Nissau. There was a, came in, the Cedar Falls Board of Education came and gave a presentation to, and, and.
You did?
Was that you?
Well, I presented, but that would have been probably five or six months ago that we gave to Realtors across
Okay.
Cedar Valley. So.
Well, that's kind of what I thought. I thought, well, that's really strange. And I didn't tell him that I was on the school board, so.
And that was really kind of one of those bond presentation meetings to talk about the impact of the bonds. So that probably would have been maybe about 10 months ago.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
And I know some of us, well, the majority of us, will be at PTA meetings tomorrow night. So this is a busy time for the board, so. Anyway, thank you. Any other questions?